The answer to the question was put as asking from Avery.
From who?
Avery. I was asking about the status of the town.
Oh, I wouldn't know. I stay away from that.
Well, I didn't let you right know about it. You're a love of knowledge. And you're a friend.
Okay, I can get the truth. I can get the truth, right? Okay.
Well.
Okay.
Who's got the big chair now?
Hmm?
Who's got the big chair now?
You are? Oh, it's still me, yes.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mr. Viera.
Here.
Dr. Vogt.
Here.
Mrs. Wittes.
Here.
Dr. Selly.
Yes.
Mr. Dangler.
Here. Can we please stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been posted in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
At this time, could we have Mr. Louis Deloro?
Certificate of recognition, Employee of the Month, February 2020. This certificate is presented to Louis Deloro for his commitment, hard work, dedication to Long Branch Department of Public Works. His willingness to assume leadership role when needed proved instrumental to the efficient operations of the city. His knowledge and engagement at work and in the community makes him an invaluable asset to his department and to the residents of Long Branch. Thank you very much and congratulations.
This accommodation of certificate is a reflection of a whole department. Stan dropped the ball on my lap. Alls I did was hand it off and the guys ran with it and the girls in the office. So, I want to thank the whole department.
Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me okay? Okay, good. So, the first thing I wanted to do is just thank you. This is a great audience that we have here, so it's nice to see so many people at a council meeting. I want to thank, first off, I do want to thank the city council, our engineer who's here with us, Laura Newman, business administrator George Jackson, city attorney Lou Raynone, and many other people who made what I'm about to show you or talk about possible. So, a year and a half ago, my running mates and I, we came into office with a pledge to put Long Branch first. Our message was about fairness. We believe that redevelopment should benefit the people who live in Long Branch. Government policy should improve the entire city. So, the council and I have put together new policies to make this happen and put the interests of Long Branch residents first. We call it the Fairer Long Branch Plan, and it includes a brand-new community pool complex and a new tax abatement program for residents and businesses. So, I want to start by just telling you a brief story. Six months ago, the developers for the Ocean Gate Apartments asked us for a tax abatement for their project west of Ocean Boulevard. They said they really needed it, but we've all heard this before. We weren't going to give them an abatement because for too long, developers got special tax breaks and we didn't get much, if anything, in return. The developer said, "We'll build you a park." We told them to build a pool instead, and not just a regular pool, but a swimming complex on Pleasure Bay Park with a large pool, kiddie pool, a play area, restrooms, changing stations, and a full concession stand. And we then said, "We want you to pay for all of it, and we want you to build it before you get started on your apartment complex." They said yes to all of the above, and on top of that, they will put a half million dollars towards improving drainage on the streets surrounding their project as well. So, for 15 years, people have been talking about a community pool complex, and it never got done. We're going to get it done, and I'd like to show you just a quick video. It's just a minute. So, I want to be clear, and so I just want to repeat this one more time. We're not waiting for the developers to finish their apartments before starting the pool. They will start building the pool first. In order for the developers to receive their abatement, they need to stay on a strict timeline to build the pool that's set by the city. So, the developer must start building the pool within 30 days of the city getting all necessary approvals, and they must finish the pool 120 days after they start, or the abatement goes away. The new facility will be located where the current Pleasure Bay Park is, on Atlantic Avenue directly across from Sixth Avenue. It will give our families a place to cool off in the summer, our seniors a place to exercise, and our children a place to learn how to swim. On a personal note, I know too many children, and more than a few adults, who never learned to swim because Long Branch had no adequate community pool, and joining a private club, quite honestly, is too expensive. Everyone in a sure community should know how to swim. It's a basic safety issue affecting our city that we can correct now. So, I've spoken with Dr. Salvatore and will work with the Board of Education and the Recreation Department to make sure every child has an opportunity to learn how to swim. And again, most importantly, the city will not pay a dime to build this pool. We'll hire Long Branch students and residents to keep the pool in good working order, both creating new jobs and reducing operating costs. So, if developers want abatements, they need to give back to the town. We put that into action. Getting developers to give back to our residents is one way we will make Long Branch fairer. The Ocean Gate Apartments will also get built with local and union labor because we're committed to investing in working people who live in Long Branch. So, finally, we're also going to invest in the city's future in Long Branch. I get calls practically every week from people, we all do, from people who tell me they're not getting a fair shake because in the past, developers got special breaks, but residents didn't. To level the playing field, the council and I decided that residents and businesses in this city should have the opportunity to get a tax abatement. Any resident whose home is more than 20 years old can apply for improvements and repairs on their dwellings. It applies to single-family homes, duplexes, condominiums. Residents can apply for up to a five-year, $25,000 abatement. Small businesses can apply for up to a five-year, $100,000 abatement. These tax abatements will encourage people to improve their property and give small businesses the chance to upgrade, renovate, and expand their storefronts. Several municipalities from around New Jersey started similar programs. Mr. Jackson will talk about that in a moment, and the results are good, and the improvements are even better. So, the Fairer Long Branch Plan levels the playing field for the community, for workers, and for all of us. Getting developers to give back to the community and treat workers with respect is fair. So is giving tax abatements to renovate your homes and improve our community. We came into office to make the city work for every single resident. Our Fairer Long Branch Plan is a big step towards achieving this goal. I want to thank you for being here tonight, and I hope you're as excited for the future of Long Branch as I am. Now, I want to introduce Laura Newman, our city engineer, to give you some more specifics and technical information about the pool. And after Laura finishes, I want to bring up Mr. Jackson, our business administrator, to discuss the new tax abatement program. Laura?
So, I just wanted to start by thanking Mayor Pallone, as well as the council and the members of the public who are here this evening. I'm excited to present the design for the community pool project that's proposed at Pleasure Bay Park. Pleasure Bay Park is currently over five acres in size, includes various recreational amenities, as well as parking for 50 vehicles. Highlights of the pool project include a 90-foot-by-50-foot pool, a 25-foot-by-25-foot kiddie pool with a spray feature, and a 3,000-square-foot poolhouse. This rendering depicts the front facade of the poolhouse, which is approximately 65 feet long by 45 feet wide. As you can see, there is a ramp included to ensure ADA accessibility from the parking lot to the poolhouse. There's also landscape enhancements along the front of the building as well. Upon entering the poolhouse, guests will be checked in and can proceed to the pool area. Amenities within the poolhouse include men's and women's restroom facilities, office area, a storage room. The pool area will include a 90-foot-long by 50-foot pool. We envision the pool to be a zero-entry pool with a maximum depth of approximately five feet, a 25-foot-by-25-foot kiddie pool with a spray feature, as well as a 45-foot-by-80-foot grassed area. The entire pool area will be enclosed by a fence with two emergency exit points. Additional improvements include landscape enhancements, lounge areas, and tables and chairs by the concession area as well. So, I just want to talk about the biggest challenge with this site in the development aspect was the grading. A lot of what I've heard from comments is this area floods. What are we going to do to address that? So, just so you understand, currently, the property sits two to three feet below the flood elevation in that area. So, with that, in accordance with city code for this project, the poolhouse and the pool need to be raised two feet above the flood elevation. So, we're going to raise the site approximately four to five feet specifically within our disturbance area. We're able to naturally grade the property back so that there's no disturbance off-site, and we're confined within that area. In addition, to assure there's no adverse drainage impacts, we're proposing swales, as well as some storm pipe to convey water so that it continues to flow within the natural pattern, so that there would be no impacts to side property lines. At this point, the project has also been submitted to the state for CAFRA permits, and we envision getting through the permit process within the next few months. And as was indicated by the mayor, the developer is obligated to start this pool project within 30 days of receipt of permits. And with that, we look forward to providing this amenity to the community of Long Branch. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Laura. Good evening, everyone. My name is George Jackson. I'm the business administrator here in Long Branch. As Mayor Pallone mentioned in his opening comments, part of tonight's agenda includes the introduction of ordinance 14-20, and it's labeled a five-year tax exemption and abatement program. So, I want to make one thing clear. In my time here working in the city of Long Branch, abatement is a word that's been thrown around, usually not very favorably by those that live in the city. It's associated with tax breaks for big developers, primarily on the oceanfront in some of our really high-end residential complexes. The governing body's desire in this ordinance is to give our local residents and business owners an abatement of their own, something to give you a break on your tax bill that will help you live here and enjoy your time in Long Branch. Also, it has a second purpose. It's to incentivize you as individual property owners to make additions and improvements to your properties and defer the tax cost that's normally associated. I can tell you, as a private homeowner, I've lived in the same house for 42 years. I've put two additions on my house, and we've added an in-ground pool. Each of those additions to my house caused my taxes to go up. The town that I live in doesn't have a tax abatement for its residences. So, the impact on my tax bill was always immediate. Under this new program, homeowner makes an addition or improvement to their residence or a business owner to their business property, they will get a five-year deferment in the added value or the added assessment value to their property. So, if you look up on the screen, you'll see up to $25,000 for residences. What that really means in plain terms is the value of the improvement. Let's give an example. Someone adds a family room to their house. If the tax assessor who happens to be here, Mr. Butto in the back row, determines that the value of that addition is $35,000, under this program, that first $25,000 of added assessed value is deferred for five years. So, for that five-year period, you would pay taxes on the $10,000 above and beyond the 25. The 25, you don't pay on that until five years lapses. So, let's put that into real dollars. What's that mean to you as a resident here in Long Branch? A $25,000 tax exemption gives you a savings of $525 on your tax bill per year. So, multiply by four, you've got a $2,100 tax savings over the course... Oh, I'm sorry, that's four years. If it's five years, add another 525. For a business owner, and I know I see some business owners in the room here tonight, the cap on that is $100,000. And please be aware, we didn't discriminate against residential owners and give you a lower number because we wanted to. That's the maximum allowed by state statute. My guess, knowing this council, is if they could have given you a higher number, they would have. But we're limited by state statute. For business owners, we're granting a $100,000 per-year exemption. Same philosophy. If they do a $100,000 worth of improvements as determined by our assessor, they will get five-years grace period before they pay tax on that $100,000. That is worth $2,100 per year. So, these savings aren't... Look, they're not tremendous, but a $525 break on my tax bill, I'll put that in my pocket any day. I think most of you in the room would like to do the same thing. So, that being said, there are some rules. The mayor mentioned one. The property has to be 20 years or older in age. It makes sense. This is about improving existing properties. Again, this is not a developer's ordinance. This is a homeowner and business owner's ordinance. One other thing you should know, it's not retroactive. I've had discussions with our tax assessor. We're going to be sending out a notice in our tax bills advising all of our residents and other taxpayers that this program is going into effect. Once the ordinance has taken full effect, you can apply through the tax assessor's office for this type of abatement. It is not retroactive. If you've got a CO now on an improvement that you put into place, you can't go back and cash in on that later. So, keep that in mind when you're planning improvements to your properties in the near future. Be aware of when that ordinance takes effect, and try to be strategic in when you time the completion of your project. Again, this is something that the council and the mayor have talked about at great length. This is something that they've listened to the taxpayers. They're trying to give something back to all of you. I applaud them for their efforts. As the mayor said, there are many other municipalities in the state that have this in effect, and it's something that can benefit each and every one of you. So, thank you for your time and attention. Mayor?
So again, I just want to thank you all for being here. That concludes our presentation. So, tonight, we'll be taking formal action on several items that are related to what we've just been discussing. But before we do, please feel free to comment or ask any questions you may have during the public participation segment of tonight's meeting. And in addition to that, we'll be... We'll all stay after, and we'll be happy to meet with you as the meeting concludes to answer any other questions one-on-one that you may have. So again, thank you for being here this evening.
Reading and approval of previous minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the January 22, 2020, meeting.
Uh-oh, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera.
Yes.
Dr. Vogt.
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes.
Yes.
Dr. Selly.
Yes.
Mr. Dangler.
Yes. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration. This is the second reading of ordinance 4-20, entitled an ordinance authorizing dedication of property to establish an additional right-of-way to widen Broadway. The ordinance was introduced on January 22, 2020. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding the audience, please step to the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will be given five minutes and only may speak once.
This isn't the public participation. It's about the ordinance, right?
It's about just the ordinance, yes, sir.
Still going to let me speak at the public one, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mignoli. No, you want to turn that back?
Whatever you want.
So, you... Go ahead, so that you're facing us. Sure.
I'm still going to get my five minutes of public, right?
Yeah.
Yes, of course.
Okay, so, are we still talking about the pool?
No.
Now, we're talking about...
The ordinance dedicating roadway for Broadway expansion.
Okay. Okay, Ernest Mignoli.
I apologize. Can you just turn that back? Thank you.
I'm going to redecorate, okay? I heard a Santini moving. I never heard a Mignoli moving. How's that?
Good. Thank you.
Good? Maybe we put a little pool here, too, you know? Sorry. So, we're expanding Broadway? I guess we're taking some land from somebody? Does that include the alley, the sliver that we talked about last week?
Yes.
We're back to the sliver.
This is all of the same. You're correct. It is...
The sliver.
There's the dedication of part of the land that's part of the lower Broadway project to allow for the expansion of Broadway and the circle that's going in. And then, the other ordinances are the sliver ordinances, but that's not this ordinance.
It's a sliver of land on Broadway between Liberty and the other side of Belmont.
Correct.
I wish you wouldn't talk about that sliver. I'm tired of hearing that sliver. The guy never told me how much a sliver is. I feel like I'm at a deli, you know? They put a sliver of liverwurst on my sandwich. How much is it?
Remember, though, Mr. Mignoli, this is a dedication, so they're giving it to the city.
Yeah, I know that.
In this case, yeah.
I know that, like with everything else, the bank and the armory, everything.
So, is that a question?
No, I just was waiting for the mayor. I like to talk to the mayor.
It's 4,484 feet, square feet.
484 square feet? That's about...
Four thousand four hundred and eighty-four square feet.
Okay. And that's the sliver, I guess. It's probably about... How wide?
It's actually 304 feet long, so that gives you an idea as to how...
Okay, I get the 304 feet long. How about wide?
16.65. At one point, it's not symmetrical, so it's...
I get it. I get it. So, now we know the sliver. Thank you, finally.
You're welcome.
I couldn't sleep not knowing what the sliver was because, you know, the mayor kept saying a sliver. So, I said, "How much is a sliver?" And he didn't want to tell me, but now we know a sliver. Is that right, Mr. Dangler? Now I know a sliver. So, my big thing is I'm hoping one day to move back to Long Branch, but, you know, I'm born and raised here. I guess I tell you a thousand times. And everything you're doing around here, I don't know why, I tend to disagree with everything. I can't find one thing I agree with. Well, I don't know. Is there something wrong with me, maybe? I know when I get comments on Facebook after I come here, everybody says, "Oh, he's a monster. Don't let him talk here. He hates Long Branch. He hates the sun, the beach. He hates people. He hates dogs. He hates everything." So, I also don't like this sliver thing, and I don't like what you're planning for Broadway. I think you're following in Asbury's thing. You think it's all about making this Las Vegas, and it's... To me, it's a paper card house. It's going to collapse because, you know...
Mr. Mignoli?
Okay, so I don't... Okay. Go ahead.
How is that relevant to this piece of property that's being given to Long Branch?
You don't see the bigger picture, Mr. Dangler?
I don't see how that's relevant.
Your what?
I don't see how that's relevant to this ordinance.
Well, you know, that's consistent. You never see how anything's relevant. You want to just talk about a sliver and not relate it to everything else, or a bank and not relate it to everything else, or a pool and not relate it to everyone else. But I see it as all related, but you don't. But it's my time anyway, right?
No, I don't believe that I read anything about the bank or anything else. It's just about this particular ordinance.
Okay. All right. So, I'm opposed to it. I don't think you should do it. You're going to make it the way you want anyway. Everyone knows that this council and the past 28 years is just going to more of the same. Everything's going to get approved. It's all like a show when we come here. Mayor, you have no idea when I leave here, what goes on the internet about me. You know, you got... A lot of people here look like they're nice people. They're passive. You should see the comments they make. Really, like I'm some kind of mon... You think I'm a monster, mayor? Huh? You think I like it? Having council people and everybody make disparaging comments about me? So, can I just say I disagree with the sliver? I disagree with what you're doing with Lower Broadway? Me personally, I think the land's all polluted. I don't know how the heck you're doing it. You sound like you're going to get CAFRA? Mayor? You know? You sound like you're going to get the permit? But, you know, I still think all that land's all polluted. But you say, "Well, it's another administration who did that. You don't want to start any litigation." Why not? Find out how much paint Cyprestine dumped in that land.
Mr. Mignoli?
Thank you. I'm done?
Sir, thank you.
Thanks. How was it? No good?
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera.
Yes.
Dr. Vogt.
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes.
Yes.
Dr. Selly.
Yes.
Mr. Dangler.
Yes. This is the third reading of ordinance 4-20, entitled an ordinance authorizing dedication of property to establish additional right-of-way... of property to establish additional right-of-way to widen Long Branch. I need a motion to adopt the third and final reading and advertise according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance five dash twenty entitled, ordinance providing for a vacation of a portion of Broadway right-of-way. This ordinance was introduced January twenty-second, 2020. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding the ordinance, please step to the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will be given five minutes and will only be able to speak once.
Hi, Ernest Magnoli. I'd like to also be known as Mr. Long Branch, because I seem to be the only person that comes up here. But I'm an Asbury person. So now we're back to the sliver again? I'm sorry, you know, I mean that, Mr. Magnoli. It's very confusing now. We're talking the sliver again? We were vacation. Now we're going on a vacation. We're back to that word.
So we're now talking about a one thousand and ninety-eight square foot portion of Broadway that's on the other side of the street, because the road is being moved to one side, that is now being vacated to align the road.
So it's going to go on vacation?
Correct.
I'm starting to get the lingo down, you know, vacation. I didn't know what that was at first. I thought the planners were going to go to the Caribbean or something, but now it means you're going to take it off whatever role it's on and bequest it to the city, and it joins the developers' site development, I guess. Isn't that the essence of what we're talking about?
Correct. It is, well, it's being returned to the property from which it came, so the answer is yes. We're vacating the public right-of-way. That's what vacation means.
All right. So you're giving it to the developer, right?
Correct.
And who is that developer?
Lower Broadway. I'm not sure what the technical target, it's the Lower Broadway project.
Yeah. That's not related to the original permit and all the contractors and the ones that had it all? I don't know. Is there any Kushner thing in there? No involvement with Kushner?
No idea what that, I don't know what...
You're the city attorney and you have no idea?
Well, if your question is, is it, does it have anything to do with that other thing? The answer is, I have no idea what you're talking about. So I'm sorry, I can't read your mind. If you want to ask me what it had to do with...
No, no, don't read my mind. Read the master redevelopment plan. Who owns it now? And is it like a shell name? Because what we always find out, you know, Long Branch one, two, three is really Kushner four, five, six. And Kushner four, five, six is really Long Branch Development. You know, who can keep up with it?
The answer is, it's, I believe that the name of the developer and property owner is diversified, and it's probably an LLC that was created by them, but they're the current property owner.
And what are the acronym, L.D.?
LLC.
No, I know LLC. What's the, what corporation?
A limited liability corporation.
No, I know that part.
LLC is.
What's the name of it?
Diversified.
Diversified? Okay. And we don't know who that is, right? If I file an OPR, can I know who diversified is?
No, you can, well, you can ask the Secretary of State. They would tell you who it is. So the answer is, you could file an OPR for all of these documents. You certainly could do that.
So if I want to know who diversified is, I ask the Secretary of State? Why can't I ask the Secretary of the Board?
Because, well, because the ownership information is on file with the Secretary of State's office. That's where you get, you do corporate search. That's how you determine it.
So we're in Long Branch, in a corporation, Long Branch, and there's no documents on who's developing that? It's all down in Trenton?
No, I didn't say that.
I thought you just did.
You could OPR all of these documents. You asked me if, how you would determine, the ownership information is on file in Trenton, but we have, you could OPR all of these documents if you'd like to.
You know, I'm probably almost out of time, but what I want to state is, you know, I really have no, nothing in this thing. I don't live in the city. I do love it. I wish I could get back in my church. I can't, because what you're allowing to go on there. But let me say one thing. I think, and I don't mean it disrespectful, because I think I know everybody on the council. Remember from the election? You know, we used to hang out in the election campaign headquarters together, when we were all friends, I guess. We're not anymore, but now, you know, look at all those promises. You know, we're not going to stop doing this, all this secret stuff. There's going to be transparency. And it takes me...
I'm sorry, you know this is about the ordinance?
Yeah, I know. I'm talking about the, I'm talking about everything that surrounds these ordinances. It's like a, it's like a sleight of hand. You know, it's like, everybody blames Mayor Schneider for all these sleight of hands, and then we reelect you all, and the sleight of hand just keeps continuing. So what did we elect? Any change? I don't get it. And then, you know, we got to fight tooth and nail to get a, who's diversified? Well, they're an LLC. Well, where's their information? I don't know. It's down in Trenton. I mean, come on. Come on, Mr. Magnoli. Why? You know, I'm not a homeowner here, but if I was, I wouldn't let you get away with that. It's really disingenuous and disrespectful to everybody in this room. You know what I mean? And then you vote yes on everything, just like this council voted yes on everything with Mayor Schneider. That's my time?
Thank you, Mr. Magnoli, for your comments.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure.
Avery Grand, four zero five Atlantic Avenue. I think for the public, maybe you should publish in the paper what you're doing with Broadway. You're realigning it, and it would be to the benefit of traffic. But you don't explain that by saying vacating all this other jive. So I would recommend you put it in a link, a sketch, and you've got your city engineer here. It's been a simple job. Show in the paper how you're realigning it, and it'll help the traffic on Broadway.
It is, it is, and we talked about it last night, so it's already, it's all been published already.
I need a motion to adopt the third and final reading advertised according to law.
Mr. Dangler, I'm sorry, you have to close the portion, the public portion of the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. I need a motion to adopt on the third and final reading advertised according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Before I go on to the next ordinance, sir, you have a cup of coffee. We don't allow beverages inside the chambers. If you could take that out, I would appreciate it. Thank you, sir. This is the second reading of ordinance six twenty entitled, ordinance providing for a vacation of the alleyway, providing access to Liberty Street to various lots within block three eleven. The ordinance was introduced on January twenty-second, 2020. I need a motion to open the public portion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance, please step to the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Hi, Mr. Long Branch. Ernest Magnoli, four hundred Del Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Born and raised in Long Branch. All right, so now we're back to another vacation, right?
Correct.
Come on, Mr. Magnoli. Just tell me exactly, another, is it another piece of land?
Correct.
Is it about Lower Broadway? Is it? Oh, sorry. You know what? I don't know what's funny, Mayor.
This, Mr. Magnoli, is literally a paper street on the northern side of Broadway.
What kind of street, a paper?
A paper street, meaning it doesn't exist.
You know what? I get such an education when I come here. Now I vacation, now you're going to explain to me what a paper street is?
So we talked about this last week.
I can't believe it.
What's a paper street?
We talked about this last week.
I forgot.
Well, you were raised here in Long Branch, and you remember that Broadway, you know, Lower Broadway, behind a lot of the storefronts, was an alleyway that I guess was used for garbage collection or rear entrance or whatever. So this, it doesn't exist anymore, so we call it a paper street. So that's what this is. It's a vacation of that paper street.
So this ordinance is to put the paper street on a vacation? Now, come on, Mayor. That's what it is, right? Are we putting it on vacation? We're giving the paper street back to the developer, whence it didn't come, or wherever.
We are vacating, once again, outlook, I'll answer the questions. It's funny, you don't want to make it funny, but you want to make jokes.
You know what? I'm not making jo... You know when I make jokes? When things are pathetic. And can I tell you something? What's been going on in Long Branch for twenty-eight years is pathetic. I don't think it's a joke. I joke because I'm afraid if you guys get angry, forget about it, what you'll say about me on the internet. So I can smile. Is there a log-in stat?
You can.
Go ahead. So now explain to me the paper is going on vacation.
The answer is, we're vacating the public right-of-way in an alleyway, and the property is not being given to the developer. Once you vacate the public right-of-way, it remains with the property owner from whence it came. So the answer is that that's all we're doing. We're vacating the public right-of-way. So we're vacating, as the mayor said, that public street. That's all we're doing.
Okay, you're giving it back to the property owner?
It's going, it always was with the property owner. We're just vacating the public's right-of-way.
Can I ask, can I ask a naive question?
Sure.
Is the owner diversified?
Same, same property owner.
You know, I'm starting to figure this out.
It's all, well, it...
You know, this reminds me of the game A Clue, you know?
Make it sound like...
Who did the paper street on vacation? Well, it was done in the dining room with the candelabra. Hello?
Ago, you asked these same questions, and it was explained to you that it was, this is a development that was approved. This is a property that has now all been cleared. It's literally a square city block. On that square city block are some paper streets that are being vacated. Nothing is changing. It's not increasing the size of this development from what it was before. It is what it is. It's all part of a planning board approval that's gone through preliminary and final approval, and it's all a requirement of not only that planning board approval, but litigation that took place years ago. So there's not any big mystery to this, Mr. Magnoli. You're just asking questions and pretending like you don't know the answer to them, because you do, because I answered them two weeks ago and two weeks before that, and I'm sure when you were at the planning board and the zoning board, too, so... But the answer is, this is what it is.
You know, Mr., I never realized, they hired you as a city attorney? You're also a mind reader. Isn't that amazing? You read minds. I can't believe it. You know what I'm thinking? You know what? If you knew what I'm thinking, I'm thinking lawsuits and stuff like that, so it's not funny. Okay? You can make all the jokes you want, because you were supposed to come here and help with all this stuff, and you just make us feel like something wrong with us, when you're just talking about...
You know, we're really just on this...
Okay, well, no, I'm disagreeing with what you're doing. In other words, you're really, if the public can understand what you're doing, you're really giving this developer everything he needs, and you're saying, "Well, we're given like four hundred square feet, but we're not increasing the property." You know what you're doing? You're calling it site development, like you did on Ocean Avenue. Look what you did for Pier Village. You called all that area site development, and then you gave it to the developer. We're not stupid. And I don't know why you think it's funny and that we're stupid. We've been watching this for twenty-eight years. Look at this city. It looks like a carved-up mess. And I'm not being disrespectful. It does. It looks like a tinsel town over there.
Mr. Magnoli, may I make a suggestion to...
I know, move to California.
No.
What?
My suggestion is, I just wanted to let you know that on Friday afternoon, all of this and everything which Mr. Magnoli or myself or any of the council member are reading from is available to you. And as a matter of fact, before it's released on Friday afternoon, it goes up on the website. So all of this information, you can ask for a hard copy on any Friday afternoon before the Wednesday meeting, and it is always automatically put up first on the website. So it has all the vacations, dedications, outlines, footage, everything there.
Paper roads?
All the details you would require. I just want to throw that to you.
And you know why I don't want it? Because you're going to pass everything anyway, so why would I waste my time? Thank you.
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the third reading of ordinance six dash twenty entitled, ordinance providing for a vacation of an alleyway, providing access from Liberty Street to various lots within block three eleven. This motion was adopted... I need a motion to adopt on the third and final reading advertised in according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance seven dash twenty entitled, ordinance authorizing dedication of property to widen and realign the intersection of Second Avenue and South Broadway. This ordinance was introduced January twenty-second, 2020.[1566.01] I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this, this ordinance, please step to the mic, microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will be given five minutes and may only speak once.
You're a nerd. You're a what? You see, you know, I write for people equally as persons. It's better than letting you do it on the internet.
Hi, Mr. Long, I'm sorry, Ernest McNolley. Asbury Park, 400 Del Lake Drive. Born and raised in Long Branch. Uh, Mr. Renone can, we're back to site development additions? Forget vacation, paper, we adding more land to the site development?
This, nope. This is the, uh, land given to the city for the widening of Broadway.
Land given to the city?
Mm-hmm. Dedication of property to the city for widening of Long Branch.
Could, could I ask who the dedicator is?
Uh, it's still diversified. Same project. These, these are all part of the same project, so you, you, once again, as we outlined, we have introduced-
You know, I don't want to see all that paperwork. I just want to meet diversified. I get the feeling I know somebody in diversified. You know, it's probably like a, one of the former bankrupt developers around here, you know, with a new name, diversified. Classified, standard construction, uh, paving, whatever. Every, everything just gets recycled. You go bankrupt, you mess up the city, you reform, you get some money from the state, and you're right back in the game, you know? That's it. So, um, so now, diversified, thanking you for the three slivers and the paper roadway, is giving you back some land, is that correct?
Correct.
You negotiate that, or it just happened?
Actually, this was done in 2017 as a result of the settlement of some lawsuits, actually.
What month in 17?
I don't know.
Yeah. Who was the mayor?
I didn't get here until 18, so it was-
Who was, who was the mayor? And by the way, I helped get you here, you know that, right? Come on, come on, come on, you ask-
The answer is, the mayor was, I assume, was Mayor Snyder, right? He was here for the 28 years before-
Is that, is that the guy, Adam, that the street's named after in Elbron? Adam Street? Wasn't that, what was that called, uh, mayor when we were kids? The one they named after Adam? Latota Terrace? What was it over there on Ocean?
I don't know, Mr. McNolley.
The one that's now named after the mayor, Adam. It used to be a, nobody knows? Nobody was born here? What was that called? Adam Street? The one in between the Kushner properties? You don't know, Mr. Dangler?
I do not.
Nobody knows? Nobody can help me?
What, I know that it's not the street that we're talking about.
No, it's not, but, uh, you know, I just was wondering if- I was wondering after this development goes up, if it's going to be called Diversified Boulevard. That's what happens, you see? When somebody is impacting, getting something done, when it finally gets done, it gets named after them. So I'm expecting this is going to be Diversified Boulevard. Wouldn't that be a nice name? For diversified. So anyway, you give the land back to the city, and is the city going to vacation it back to diversified, or no? It's coming from diversified to the city. Why is that? Because it's a city road that you have to expand?
Correct.
Okay. So, so finally, after all these deals, we're getting something. Yeah. In total, is the land that we're getting as much as the land we're giving?
I don't know.
You don't know? Okay. I'll come back next week, you let me know? Or the week after? Are we getting more or giving more? I say "we" because I was born here. Are we getting more or giving more? Who's making out on this? Diversified or Long Branch? I'm not joking.
I don't think it's a question of making out, Mr. McNolley.
No, I'm just saying, who's getting more land?
I'll try to explain it to you.
Okay, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
So, so with this particular project, the site is, Broadway is being widened, and at the end of Broadway, at the top of Broadway, they're making a turnaround, so it's a circle. So if you know where the triangle is, where, where Broadway splits, that's, that's the idea. So in order to do that, in order to widen it, there's a little give, there's a little take, in order to make that roadway work. That's simplified the idea.
So now my question is, who's getting more land? Diversified or Long Branch?
You know what? I, I don't know because-
Okay, okay, that's okay. So the city attorney doesn't know, you don't know? Probably Mr. Martin doesn't know. Nobody knows. Nobody knows who's making out better.
It's not a question of not knowing. I think it's not something that you want to add or subtract.
But you just said you don't know. It's important. Land? Conveyance is not important? All I'm asking is, is diversified making out on this, or is Long Branch making out on this? And I'm going to let you read my mind, Mayor, uh, I called you Mayor Renone, I'm sorry. Uh, Council Renone, who's getting more land? It's a simple question. You know.
I, I think I've explained it to you, well-
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNolley.
Thank you. What?
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the third reading of ordinance 7-20, entitled Ordinance Authorizing Dedication Of Property To Widen And Realign The Intersection Of Second, Second Avenue And South Broadway. I need a motion to adopt the third and final reading advertised according to law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance 8-20, entitled Ordinance Authorizing Dedication Of Property To Establish An Additional Right-of-Way To Widen Broadway. The ordinance was introduced January 22nd, 2020. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding this ordinance, please step to the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will be given five minutes and may only speak once.
Hi, Ernest McNolley, Asbury Park, 400 Del Lake Drive, born in Long Branch. I can't wait to read the, read my reviews on the inter, on the internet after this. They say, "That McNolley spoke four times." Right? Didn't you just invite me up to speak? Isn't this my fourth time? Why should I have to read what I read two weeks ago? He's no good. He's off the rails.
Can you stick to what you came-
No, well, it is. Why, why should I?
What you came up here for, please.
Okay. Yeah, because you messed up last time. You, you, you forgot that it was the public and it was really the other one, so, and then they blame me. I'm not doing anything illegal. You're inviting me up, right?
I didn't invite you up. You're part of the public. You're welcome to speak, but-
You did invite me up. You said "anyone"?
Anyone.
Who wants to sp- oh, I'm not anyone? I'm not anyone.
I didn't say that, sir. Stick to the ordinance.
All right. You invited me up. Admit it.
I did not.
Yes, you did.
Stick to the ordinance, please.
All right. Let me guess, we're back to diversified? Diversified?
Same project.
I can't. Why am I the only person coming up here?
You want me to answer that question?
Oh, I didn't ask it because I don't want an, hello? No, I don't want you to answer it. I just asked it because I didn't want an answer. Okay, go ahead. Read my mind.
I'm not-
No, go ahead, read my mind.
I'm, I'm not going to answer that question.
No, you're not going to answer it.
It's not a legal question.
It's not a legal question? Conveyance of land is not a lea-? Site development is not a lea-
Your question, your question was, "Why did I come up here?" That's, that's not a legal question.
The question was, "Why did I come up here?"
That was your-
You mean me? "Why did I come up here?" Uh, you know what? You're confusing me. Lawyers are good at that. They'll confuse citizens. You know how they do it, right? You remember that class in law school? How to confuse them? Wear them down, and then you just get whatever you want. So, we're back to diversified, correct? Maybe I'll, Mr. Dangler, can I ask you? Or no? I'm not allowed to ask him a question?
You can ask a question.
Okay.
Make it germane to the ordinance.
It is, it's not only germane, it's tattamount.
Make sure it is, sir.
Okay. Are we talking about diversified here?
Yes.
Same.
Okay, we're talking about a third reading, which means you can take action, you can vote, and it's adopted, correct?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay. We're talking about the continuum of what we've been talking about. Diversified, giving and taking, right? We can't really know who's making out better, but we put that aside. But now we're talking about another piece. And where's that piece?
Paper street?
No, this one is, this is, once again, it's, it's land for a roadway dedication. It's all part of the widening of Broadway. That's what this one is. This is 7-20.
Uh-
Yes.
That's what it is.
Can, can I? Can I ask, uh, I guess, the, the mayor, the legal, and the council president? After all this paper and vacation and everything's done with diversified in the city, right? Relative to this last thing that we're talking about right now, when everything is adjourned and it's finished, you keep saying widen Broadway.
Yeah, I was looking at that. Correct. Yes, correct.
Okay. When it's all said and done, all the conveyances, all the vacations, how wide is Broadway going to be?
Laura, I don't know if you know the answer.
I don't.
I can't. Oh, the planner won't tell me?
I don't have a plan with me, so you-
You, oh, you don't know how wide it's going to be?
Not off the top of my head, I do not.
Not off the top of my head. So they're going to vote on a major thing here. The plan isn't here. The planner doesn't know how wide Broadway's going to be. The mayor, city council, and council president doesn't know how wide it's going to be, but as soon as I go away from here, you're going to vote yes. Is that correct? And as the planner said, "Off the top of my head, I don't know." What, is it going to be as wide as? Go ahead.
This is part of planning work process. So the roadway width design is all already reviewed and approved by the appropriate agent.
I know that. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't approved. The question is, you're now a planner for ongoing site development? Correct?
And, and, great, that's even better.
So you've seen the plans a lot, right? No, no, the widening of Broadway, you've probably looked at it a thousand times, right? And you just can't recall when it's, reaches its sunset, how wide Broadway's going to be? Not off the top of your head. Can you give me a ballpark?
Laura?
No?
Check that down, please. Thank you.
Oh, no more questioning?
No.
Okay, I can't find out how wide it's-
This is a council meeting. Bring it right here.
Okay. How wide is it going to be?
To the employees. Bring it right here.
Okay, Mr. Dangler, how wide is it going to be?
I don't know.
You don't know?
Thank you, sir.
Is that my time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Am I going to be coming back for another one? I hope not.
I need a motion to close.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the third reading of ordinance 8-20, entitled Ordinance Authorizing Dedication Of Property Established For An Additional Right-of-Way To Widen Broadway. I needed, I need a motion to adopt on the third and final reading advertised according to law.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the second reading of ordinance 9-20, entitled Ordinance Providing Vacation Of A Portion Of Alleyway, Providing Access From Second Avenue And Belmont Avenue, Various Lots Within Block 283, 283.01, And 284. The ordinance was introduced January 22nd, 2020.
Yes.
I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. If there's anyone in the audience that has a comment to make regarding the audience, please step to the microphone, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will be given five minutes and may only speak once.
Michael Yancarelli, 682 Arch Street, Long Branch, uh, lifetime resident. Um, just a comment, um, uh, I don't even know the gentleman's name that has been coming up, but I think for me, um, five corners and the widening, and you're going to make a circle, wouldn't it behoove us to have, um, what that looks like and what we're talking about? I mean, it would be much clearer. I understand the parking lots, and I know five corners from when I'm a kid, but being able to see it, and that would answer a lot of the concerns and the questions that are coming forth. To me, it just makes sense. I don't, I don't know. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. McNolley, to Michael's point, I think I can explain this very quickly, if you want.
It's my time now? You're not taking my time?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I haven't started.
Unless you stop the clock. Go ahead, Mayor.
So let me just, yeah-
No, no, you go first. It's, no, it's your time. Go ahead, all the-
Mr. Renone was right. The last one was the dedication. This is the last ordinance for this evening regarding the diversified property.
Thank God.
Still is diversified. It is a vacation, and it is, uh, a, a paper street on the south side of Broadway, similar to the one that I had mentioned earlier on the north side of Broadway. So it doesn't, it doesn't exist. It's like in the middle of that lot.
Thank you. Thank you. So now we're talking about a paper street, a vacation, and a dedication. I got it. All right. So now, um, I, I think it was Mr. Yancarelli, is that, you know, he makes a, an exquisite point. People want to see things. You remember in the days when we used to develop around here? We used to have models up on the, right up on the desks. Here's a whole model, a scale, right? So instead of, in like, I don't know, Mr. Renone says, "In my head," we can see it, and I could say, "Well, look, right next to Broadway there, it says 84 feet wide, and then we don't have to worry about the plans aren't here." He's absolutely correct. Everything that's doing in a city like Asbury and Long Branch, we should see a model. A model. And they're not that expensive to make. You know, why do we have to do it like in some Twilight? You know, like, leave it up to, you can't see it, and you can't see it till it's done. That's, that's not good. You have any comment on that, Mayor? Can we have models and see, can we see the? How many corners is Broadway going to be? Six, seven? Can, I can't ask you a question, Mayor? On my time?
I'm sorry, you're, you're, you're asking me?
Yeah, you're the mayor, right?
Uh, you know, look, I, I'm not arguing with you-
I'm not either arguing, just-
You're absolutely right.
Okay, thank you.
The difference is, remember, though, in fairness, you know, we've had nine ordinances on this one little thing, which is, you know, which has taken almost an, an hour. Generally, you know, someone doesn't come up and question us on what, in essence, I said, our-
You mean like someone like me, right?
Our paper street.
Okay, I get it.
Anyone, Mr. McNolley?
I know, I understand. Look, I've been thrown out of nicer places than this, trust me. So what you're saying is generally-
I apologize, because if I had known that you were going to come up like this, we would have made sure that there's some sort of di, you know, diagram.
Well, you know, God-
And certainly consider that in-
God willing, God willing, I'm going to come back every two weeks. I don't know for how many years. I know that makes Mr. Dangler very happy. I'm going to be back here every two weeks. And every time you have a public comment on an ordinance, and it's five minutes, I'm going to speak. What is this, my fifth, sixth time up here? What is this, my fifth, sixth time up here? You think I enjoy this? You know what I'm trying to do? Trying to advocate for a bunch of people in Long Branch who are probably watching on TV saying, "Give it up, McNulty. They're just going to approve it anyway. They're going to do what they want anyway." And next thing you know, diversified is going to own all of Lower Broadway where you were raised. And I don't really like that, but, you know, what can I say? Nobody else is coming up. Thank you, Mr. Yancarelli. He, that's, again, what a, what a point. Let us see the model. Why not? Why vote on it without a model? There's no one in this room knows what you're talking, what it's going to look like. Sliver, dedication, paper? Show us a model. You know, people respond to a model. They say, "I like that?" "I don't like that." For example, "I don't know what the name of that new hotel is that you built with a piano on the top. What's the name of that thing?" Who would approve that if they saw it? It looks like a piano on its end. Who's going to stay in that hotel? What's it called? Nobody wants to tell me.
The Wave.
The Wave. Can I get a room there for less than $500 a night? That's a wave. That's a green wave, I guess.
Nothing to do with this ordinance, Mr. McNulty?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You know what? I can always, thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Dangler. I really did move off. But the point is, we're back to diversified and we're back to a dedication, paper, and a vacation. And the bottom line is, the engineer does not have a model and neither was the planning board or zoning board showing anything. And it's all done esoterically, I guess, extemporaneously, like the word was, that, you know what? You'll see it when it's finished.
But that's really not fair because what the engineer, what the engineer, it's not fair. And the reason it's not fair is because this project in this chambers has been the subject of an enormous number of hearings, including the planning board preliminary and final site plan, in which everybody had the 50 drawings that described what this project is. So, it is unfair for you to say that nobody at the plan wide the street's going to be because they were all part of approved plans. They've been approved by the planning board on a number of occasions. They were discussed here when the ordinances settling the lawsuit were done in 2017. So, the fact of the matter is, is that the public has been very well informed about this. I know that you want to come here and you want to ask these individual questions about an alleyway and pretend like you're the only one who might or might not know. But the fact of the matter is.
All right, enough of the mind reading. No, I can't take the mind reading anymore. Thank you. My time's up. Thank you for the mind reading.
Need a motion to close?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the third reading of ordinance 9-20 entitled ordinance providing vacation of a portion of the alleyway, providing access from Second Avenue and Belmont Avenue's various lots within block 283, 283.01, and 284. I need a motion to adopt on the third final reading advertised and according to law.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Ordinance for introduction, this is the first reading of ordinance 10-20 entitled ordinance amending various fees and codes of the City of Long Branch. I need a motion to introduce the first reading advertised and posted according to law and set for the public hearing of February 26, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 11-20 entitled ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a deed notice for Manahasset Creek Park property. I need a motion to, motion to introduce on the first reading advertised and posted according to law and set for public hearing, February 26, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 12-20 entitled ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a deed notice for Norwood Avenue Pocket Park property. I need a motion to introduce on the first reading advertised and post according to, according to law and set for public hearing of February 26, 2020.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 13-20 entitled ordinance of the City of Long Branch, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey approving the application of the execution, the financial agreement within Ocean Cooper Revitalization Urban Renewal LLC in connection with a portion of the oceanfront Broadway redevelopment area. I need a motion to introduce on the, on the first reading advertised and posted according to law and set for public hearing, February 26, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance 14-20 entitled ordinance of the City of Long Branch establishing a five-year tax abate, a five-year tax exemption and abatement program for improvements to dwellings, multiple dwellings, commercial and industrial structures pursuant of the five, pursuant to the five-year exemption and abatement law. I need a motion to, I need a motion to introduce the first reading and advertise post, post according to law and set for public hearing, February 26, 2020.
So moved. Second. Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Before we open up the public portion on last, the last public meet, public portion of the meeting that we had two weeks ago, there was some derogatory name-calling that was certainly uncalled for. So, we would certainly ask that we keep our meetings in order and certainly in a respectful manner. Everyone does have their opinion. I've always said that. But some of the language that was used on the last, at the last council meeting is unacceptable. So, if that continues, we will, I will ask the clerk to shut the mic off. And if it continues even after that, then we will have to consider in council chambers at a later date to even shorten the time of the public portion from five minutes to whatever we agree on. We are just trying to keep it a little bit in order, but you certainly have the right to be frustrated or be approval of what we do. But we certainly can't have the derogatory vulgar language within the council chambers. Thank you. This is the public portion.
Mr. Dangler, I'm sorry. I need a motion to open the public portion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Do you have a motion to open up the public portion of the meeting?
Do you want to go?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. My name's Linda Swinby and I reside at 157 Seventh Avenue Gregory School Apartments. I like your concept of the pool, but I have quite a few questions. How, number one, how is the pool going to be promoted to the public? Will it be through newspapers, flyers? How is the public going to know about anything about the?
Linda, probably all of the above. The, you know, it's very similar to the Ocean Township pool and I see that they have, they advertise constantly on social media and they do actually do some, some print advertising. I've seen them, I've seen them advertising the link actually for, you know, for, for Ocean Township. So, we'll certainly do that. We'll, you know, we have a very active social media platform here in the city and we'll, you know, we'll do that quite extensively.
Anything with public access TV?
Sure.
Okay.
This is Channel 20.
Okay. Now, I have a real problem with this. An indoor pool, couldn't it be, and I know we're talking about money again, but couldn't it be a year-round pool? It'd be more, it could be used 12 months a year. This way, it's only just a few months?
Linda, if I may, you know, we've obviously considered that a year-round pool is, would probably quadruple or more the price. There's an indoor pool in Neptune.
But I don't understand that.
I'm sorry?
I don't understand that, what you're saying.
And indoor pool, Laura, what do we?
Yeah, so the cost of construction is about four times for the indoor.
Yeah, but you got, you're talking about the, building the apartments and you're talking about this and that. I mean, it's all money, 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 so why not?
Well, remember, we're not paying for any of this.
Oh, okay.
Right? And so, so this is at no cost to the city. In addition, we had, you know, why we like the idea of the outdoor pool also is that we have a mechanism in place to staff and operate it. So, if you think about it, like most, or certainly many of the oceanfront condominiums or the large developments throughout the entire stretch of Long Branch Oceanfront, our, our lifeguard staff, staffs that. They pay the city, of course. So, you know, we checked and obviously would not be difficult at all to maintain our pool. We're probably doing, I don't know, 10? 10 operations and, I mean, we. Six, I mean, but then combine that with all the beaches we have, so it's nothing to really add that. And also, we thought, you know, there's, we have a large student staffing and adult staffing who do the pools and the beaches.
I'll sign up.
Along the oceanfront. So, we would, yeah, and I mean, you're one of them. So, we would, we would do that as well at this pool. So, the idea is that we would maintain it and operate it and it, you know, it wouldn't be much of a cost. It's also one of the reasons why we chose that Pleasure Bay Park because there are 50 lined parking spaces that are, that are right there already. There's a basketball court, there's a playground, and there's a, you know, a large, a large area as well. So, that was, you know, kind of why we, we picked that area.
Okay. But then here's another little snap. You've got geese. Now, it's closed in, but you've got space where geese can fly in. You've got squirrels that could climb over the fence. Now, um.
You know, there's always going to be situations that we have to deal with like that. It was something we discussed with the, I just discussed with the Health Department and the director. He does not think that that's going to be an issue. He believes that the geese are going to prefer to go in the Shrewsbury River than to land in the pool there. But, you know, it's something we will address. We have a full-time dog. Obviously, that will be our priority and we'll look into whatever else we need to do if that's an issue. But in, you know, with his expertise, he did not anticipate it being that much of a problem. I understand what you're saying, though.
Okay. And then another thing, what about transportation, getting people to the pool? Now, what I mean, getting at, you know, you've got families, the husbands work, work. Now, how are the mothers going to get their kids to the pool?
You know, we haven't worked out everything. People obviously get to the beach when they need to, but actually Councilwoman Vogt just suggested, you know, we had the Easy Ride thing. If that comes back, that would certainly be a location that we would consider as a drop-off because that goes throughout most of the city.
Okay. And then what about security? Police protection for?
We, we, we would, you know, again, none of these details have been worked out, but we'll certainly have, you know, we anticipate having cameras at the pool. We certainly have, anticipate having some security presence at the pool as well.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone in council members. My name is Anita Craving and I live on 161 Garrett Drive. I have, I have a short question for, for tonight. If, if, if you're going, are you going to charge fees each resident? And if, and if so, how much would the fees be?
We, we don't know at this point, Anita, but yes, we, we would, you know, we would have to charge some fee. We haven't thought that out exactly. I mean, one of the things we're thinking of, obviously, is that it would match the, you know, the beach fee. So, a daily pass would be $5 or $7 on weekends. And of course, we would look at what other communities are doing. We're not looking to make a profit on this, on this pool, but we are looking to, you know, break even and not have it cost anything. Again, another, another big plus here is, remember, there's going to be no debt service on the pool. So, a lot of communities build municipal pools and then, you know, they have to bond for it to build it. That's, was one of the beautiful things about this. And also getting back to, you know, what I said earlier, it was part of the reason that we chose that location because you had some recreational amenities already in place. You had a large area, somewhat isolated, and you had all those parking spaces already, already in place.
Thank you.
Lori Dalton, 455 Atlantic Avenue. I understand we've wanted a pool for years. I think the fact that we pay Seashore to take our kids for swimming lessons during the winter, we pay Monmouth University to use their pool for swim team, I don't think it's asking too much to have a 12-month-a-year facility. It could be used for hosts of things. 50 parking spaces is not nearly enough. What's going to happen to the, to the cul-de-sacs that are on the side? What's going to happen when you want to go park in front of your house, but now it's packed with people going to the pool? You have the recreation, reclamation center directly across the street. Huge trucks are in and out of there on a daily basis. Long Branch is a walking town. You're going to have kids that are going to try and get across Jolene and then deal with Atlantic Avenue, which in the summer is now a cut-through for Jolene. So, the traffic is getting just as bad on Atlantic as it is on Jolene. So, now you've got the pool, you've got parking, you've got these big dumpsters pulling in and pulling out. I don't think it was, a thought was really given to location for, it's the farthest away from everything in town. Like, you can't get any farther north in Long Branch. I just think with all the property that is available, there's got to be a safer spot. What about the money that we've already paid for the basketball courts and the playground and to maintain the baseball field? Does that just get washed in the garbage because someone's coming in and is going to build all new?
Well, Laura, you asked a bunch of questions. Let me address some of them. First off, let me just say, did, did you say that you wanted a 12-month-a-year pool? Or I didn't?
No, I definitely do. I think between this.
Okay. So, that's really, you know, to be honest with you, this, this was an opportunity that we saw and we took advantage of.
There's a pool at Gregory School, there's a pool at Anastasia School. Campus free.
My, my son has been to both and it's, they're very tiny, small pools. This is a large community pool with the kiddie pool. But, but let me just say, in other words, we saw an opportunity, we saw an opportunity where it wouldn't cost the city much and many people throughout the city have often talked about having a community pool. This was the opportunity, we, we took it. An indoor 12-year facility, Laura, $10, $14 million easily? We couldn't do that.
But how much money are they all spending to build all these buildings?
But, but, I mean, I just want to talk about the development.
I don't think that has anything, that doesn't have anything to do with whether or not.
Well, because you're taking.
I mean, I don't know that we can say to a developer, "Oh, by the way, we want an indoor pool. Give us $14 million."
Well, you just did that with, "We want a pool."
I'm sorry?
But didn't you just do that with a developer by saying, "We're not, we don't want to park, we want a pool"?
Well, first off, that was one of your other questions. Laura, could you address the parking situation, which obviously we talked about?
Yeah, so the locations that we looked at, this was the most suitable because they've already had the 15-inch distance drive mark installed.
Which you said was what was necessary for the size of the pool?
Correct.
So, that, that fits, Laura.
Okay.
The pool size. The other thing is, you know, I have to be honest with you. Look, we're, this is a work in progress. We saw the opportunity, we're taking, you know, we're, we're taking a chance with it and, and I'm, I'm excited about it. I spoke with Mr. Zubba. He didn't think the trucks going in and out is really a problem. I must tell you, I've had a membership, as has Councilwoman Vogt, at Ocean Township. There is never, and that place is packed and there's all kinds of cars. There's, there's never been an issue getting in and out of there, finding a space.
Yeah, but there's a lot more than 50 parking places there.
But Laura, remember, when you think about a weekend visit to Long Branch on the beaches, think of how large our oceanfront is and you have thousands of people who are going to the beach. This is a community pool for residents only. So, I don't think there's going to be a lot of the issue that you're, that you're talking about. Could I be wrong? Maybe, but I don't think so.
Are there going to be?
At least anybody I've talked to doesn't, you know, we don't, we don't think so. But again, it's a good point you're bringing up.
Will there be buffers between the backyards of Barook and, and where the proposed pool?
Uh, Laura, could you address that?
What's important to note is that this is not located on the Barook.
Laura, maybe could you use the microphone there? Laura, could you use the mic?
Sorry, sorry. This is the furthest point away from Barook. It is tucked behind the basketball court, which would be maintained. In addition, the playground area that exists out there would stay as well. So, there is landscaping enhancement proposed around the, you know, around the slope and stuff to screen, but there's no, nothing on the extremities. There's currently fencing, fencing there. We have no problem looking at that and making sure it's adequate, but there's no plan at this point to do additional screening at that, along the perimeter.
Okay, thank you.
And then Laura, I'm sorry, I just want to mention, you know, you, you mentioned a 12-month. You know, one of the things we looked at, obviously, is the operational costs of 12-month. So, I mean, you have the electricity, you have the maintenance, you have the heat, you have everything associated with that.
We're just going to pay for the maintenance of this?
This, this is, as I indicated, this would pretty co, pretty much coincide with the beach operation in terms of hours and so forth. I'm sorry, Mr. President. It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Tarlo, 52 Barook Drive. I beg to differ with you in terms of impact. I want to talk about neighborhood impact on this. I think to the previous speaker, she's absolutely correct about the parking issues. We know when there are concerts and other events that happen in Pleasure Bay that they do park around on Barook Middle and the, and River and so forth. So, I think that is some concern. I want some protection about my parking on the street. No parking unless you're a resident of that street. I don't know how you handle that in terms of guests. 50 spaces, I'm not so sure that that is enough for the size of the pool and I don't know if you're looking at expanding spaces across the way where the dump is or the center over there. I am concerned about the number of people that will be there, the noise factor in terms of that. You do have some, as you have pointed, the evergreens, those are on the Pleasure Bay side of that. I, I would like to propose that there would be evergreens that are planted along the fence of the entire backyard of all the Barook folks so that that blocks some of the noise that is bound to come from that area as well as the visibility of looking at the pool. I was, thank you all for approving the addition that I was going to do. I'll, I'll take a stab at what the timing is on that now. But there was supposed to be a deck and I didn't think I was going to be overlooking a pool at that point. So, I'm very disappointed as a property owner from that perspective. So, noise, parking, barriers for there. And if you could also explain again on the drainage because it floods tremendously in all of our yards back there. I wasn't sure with your description how that was taking care of that and draining away from all of our houses, whether additional gradation needs to be done in terms of that. Thank you.
Yeah, please. And before you do, Laura, Ms. Tarlo, I just wanted to say thank you for your questions. They were all very, you know, excellent questions. And many of them, if you wanna stay later, we can address each and every one. But, but thank you for that.
So as it relates to noise, I don't think we envision this being open late and it would certainly comply with city code. As it relates to parking, I understand your concerns. Kind of as the mayor anticipated, we were looking at this from the conceptual place. It appears to work on paper. We're more than happy to continue to review that if, in the event you're experiencing problem. The goal isn't to impact the neighborhood. It's to provide a facility for the entire community. Having said that, you also talked about the trees. I'm happy to look at our ability to provide some trees there. We may be able to do that along the fence line specifically. And then as it related to the drainage, just as you've indicated, the site gets brought up. There's a swale that's proposed, so you have the area adjoining the basketball court. There's a swale to that side which kind of continues along where the kiddie pool is.
But is the swell coming down towards Barook or is it away from? Because you're raising, you're raising two feet, so the swell-
Well, this is far from Barook. I don't wanna get up.
Believe, believe me, I was just there yesterday and after, and there wasn't much rain, but believe me, it was flooded.
What may be helpful is if I show you the plan afterwards, because there is gonna be drainage that's gonna be put in. And it's gonna maintain the existing contour. So we're tying into existing within very, very close proximity to this. We're not getting close to Barook. And then it will flow naturally as it does today. But I'm happy to show you the plans maybe after the meeting.
My other folks from Barook will tell you about the flooding in their backyards and so forth.
Well, the other thing is currently, this is below the flood elevation. So that's how I started, is this is two to three feet below. It splits between flood zone eight and nine on the property. And currently, the property is sitting at elevation six or seven. So that would be why we would be seeing some of those flooding conditions we're seeing is that in the event of a storm event, currently, the site is sitting lower. So the improvements would certainly be higher. And we're putting drainage in to compensate for that so that we don't adversely impact the neighbors.
And it's the drainage in a way, so there's no still water, so we don't have west now, you know, mosquitoes and what have you.
Yes, we don't anticipate anything like that and I'm happy to show you the plan.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello, I'll be brief. I'm Jeff Tarlo. Laura's my, my better half, by far. 52 Barook Drive. By the way, to reintroduce myself, Mr. Jackson, I'm the guy that wrote the letter praising everybody in, in Long Branch. We bought a house about a year ago. And from Marshall, who is at the recycling plant, to the zoning office, to the mayor. This is an incredible town. So I wrote a letter, you might recall, thanking everybody in, in this town. And I really do applaud your efforts to make a fairer Long Branch. Again, I'll be very brief. I just want to emphasize or reiterate my wife's concern. And she's a much more tolerant individual than I am. I'm very prone to noise and, and disturbances. So anything that could be done to mitigate the, the noise factor, the garbage factor, anything like that for the homeowners on Barook Drive, I think we'd be most appreciative. And once again, thank you, everybody at Long Branch. This is a phenomenal town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Don Coven, 654 Buttonwood Avenue. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of the Board of Education and also the Long Branch Housing Authority. You know, when this project, when I, when I heard about this project, I went out and I spoke to some residents, specifically kids. And let me back up some, let me recognize a board member. Please stand up, board member, Mr. Grant. All right. They're, they're here also because they know, they know how important, Ms. Peters, I know where she is. All right. She's got her two sons there too, so I, they used to be my students. But we recognize how important this project is. You know, when you talk about having 6,000 students or approximately 6,000 students in the educational field in Long Branch. And when you have schools that are approximately two blocks from the ocean and students do not, have not learned how to swim, that's a problem. That's a problem. Now, some people say that it's just recreation. But if you add 6,000 students to the population that will learn and know how to swim, then it becomes a safety factor. Because now we got 6, 6,000 more warriors out there that possibly can save a life. And I'm not talking about seniors. I'm not talking about students that are over, or people that's over 21. I'm talking about younger folks who go on to college and have to take that class and don't know how to swim. Back in 1969, 70, 71, we had two community pools. They were located, one in Grant Court where I grew up and one was in Sevier Manor. And that's where I learned how to swim. Some of us was not here at that, that time, you know, I'm old. However, you know, when I went to college and we had to take that class in swimming, I was able to pass that class based on the fact that we had a pool that we can use as a community pool. So I just wanna commend the City Council and the Mayor for taking this opportunity to change the life of our 6,000 students going forward. And I can tell you, it will be an impact. You may not see it today, you may not see it tomorrow, but this will be a game changer. Thank you, Mayor.
Avery Grant, 405 Atlantic Avenue. I'm glad to see a pool being built because we need it. I'd worked with Freehold and Narasank and I wanted a pool built at Seven Presidents' Park. And he had promised it Fox Hill. But once that didn't go through, we began to work on getting one built at Seven Presidents' Park, but he died. And I think it's very important also that we look at an indoor capability. Because we need that. We, as is mentioned, we have to rent the Monmouth University. Now, when I was City Engineer of East Orange, we had an indoor pool at one school and I built two other indoor, outdoor pools for the use of the public. And we do have to be concerned about parking. That's, and I live a half a block from this thing. So I think it's good that we're looking at that. But I think you can maybe build this pool with the preparation for later to enclose it. Former President, former Superintendent Farina was trying to work with the Red Cross and to see if we could get a facility built right there by Jerry Morgan Park. And we couldn't get the cooperation done to get that done. But it's very important that we get a pool built there, someplace in the city. And I built my pools at federal expense. See, that's one thing I had, we developed dream books. And if a dollar came out, we were front on that line, getting what we needed. So I'm not happy with all these abatements either. Because I'm sure your assessors can tell you, once you develop all your land, the value of land goes up. So your value of, your taxes capitalize because you got the increase in salaries and all the other stuff. So you're putting a burden on the, so don't think the developer is such a great person. They're still cleaning Crockett here. But I, I appreciate you building a pool. We need a pool here. But I think you can build it with the preparation, maybe enclosing it at a later date. Because we need that around the clock. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Christian, Seaw, Seabreeze Avenue. In reference to, sorry, I'm here on behalf of Monmouth County Youth Advisory Board. And we feel that indoor is something that's not that big of a cost. As it's not something that you could do indoor/outdoor. People do, Ocean Township is actually in the process of getting theirs put indoor/outdoor. In the summer, you hit a button and it retracts. And then when they have to close during rain days, they don't lose what they have coming in. Does that make sense?
When you say they push a button like they have-
Like they're, they're in the process of planning to put an indoor/outdoor, meaning it's retractable, the roof is retractable, the sides are retractable. So it's operational all year round. You don't have to pay heating costs because the sun coming through heats it. That, that option for indoor/outdoor also eliminates that big cost of having to put a big warehouse-type structure around it.
Understood. And certainly, you know, I don't know that that's exactly an option on this one just because we're not funding this. But we can certainly look into that and provide the cost parameters. What we initially looked, what I can tell you is to do it with the physical structure around it. It's approximately four to five times the cost. And mainly, it's due to the strength of the concrete and the abutment and the heating and all the things. I'm happy to look at what Ocean Township you said is doing and see what, what they're doing to do that and if it's an option even for the city in the future.
Okay.
How you doing? Peter Gonzalez, 205 Sixth Avenue. I was just wondering, what about the summer activities that go on there? Like baseball games and stuff like that? What, what are they gonna do about that?
So the, we looked into that too. You know, there's, there's, there's baseball fields throughout the city. My understanding though is that that particular baseball field is larger than all the other-
It's the only adult field in Long Branch.
I'm sorry?
The only adult field.
Yeah, well, I understand there's one at, at Manahasset as well. But I understand, I, I know what you're saying because we've asked that if you use that field, then you can't have, you can't do anything else while that field is being used. So I know that I've been told from our Director of Recreation that he's talking to the school system, that I believe they have one, if not one or two, I'm not sure. And we're gonna see if we can work something out. My understanding is that there are two adult Long Branch teams that are part of an out-of-town, out-of-town league. They play about 20 games during the summer, if I'm not mistaken.
About 30.
So we're, so we're trying to, because yes, the bottom line is that the pool will, will cut into the full field that you have there. So we are trying to work that out.
Okay.
You know, you know, when, and I totally understand, but I think when you weigh, you know, you're always weighing something, right? So I mean, when you weigh the location and why we picked that place and the use, et cetera, that's kinda where we, where we came out. But again, we, we are actively trying or are going to actively try to see if we can work that out.
Is that gonna be like this year? Cause we're-
Well, you know, it all, it, it, it really depends on, as, as Laura said, you know, they, they're under an obligation of 30 days when we have all the permits, they're ready to go. And, you know, they have 120 days or four months to complete once they start. The issue is, and Mr. Raynon could speak to that, we're gonna hopefully speed up that CAFRA process because we need a CAFRA permit. But there are some built-in public hearing times and things like that. So, so it would be premature for me to say that at this point. Once we have the per, all the permitting that we need, not the developer has to get, but us, you know, then we're, we're ready to go four months from, from that point.
Okay, but, yeah. We have, like, you know, we're, we're gonna start our season soon. Like, this is like, just hit us, like, we just need to find a place to go play somewhere. Cause we have teams coming from different states to come, different country. And then, you know, we, we just try to find somewhere else to play.
I would suggest if you give me, you know, we're hopeful, well, you know, I don't wanna say anything at this point. But if you keep in touch with me, give me your number, I'll update you as soon as we know something. But I just think it would be premature for me to, am I right, Laura? Or Lu, to-
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Vincent Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. I request one-minute notification. I've been coming in this room since 2003. Tonight, I'm gonna do some Words of Wisdom by The Temptations. It's a song. Here are the lyrics. Smiling faces show no traces of the evil that lurks within. Smiling faces, smiling faces, sometimes they don't tell the truth. Smiling faces, smiling faces tell lies, and I got proof. The impossible task is to figure out which of the smiles is a mask. Think about it. Did you hear me? The impossible task is to figure out which of the smiles is a mask. The Temptations. The pool, it's a nice thing. But tonight, in the scope of everything, it's a feel-good mask. A mask which diverts attention from the main concern. Long-term tax abatements. Mayor Pallone using diversionary tactics again. By ordinance 1320, the developer will generate a tremendous amount of profits on roughly 169 units of high-end luxury. And make no mistake about it, the taxpayers of this city are indirectly subsidizing this long-term tax abatement for this project and the pool as well. Also, another 169 units luxury with no contribution to the Board of Ed. Again, putting the tax burden on the residents of this city. The infrastructure improvements were done at the planning board. I know that. I was there at that meeting for the approvals. So this council can't take credit for the infrastructure improvements. The developer had a stake in it because of the flooded streets. He doesn't want his residents going out into Long Branch flooded streets. The Cochrane Raynon Law Firm, of which the city attorney is part of, is about five years old. They've generated a tremendous amount of money from municipal government. And again, make no mistake about it, the Pallone team, along with Congressman Pallone and their special interests, are securing ordinances 13 and 14 to grease the pay-to-play gravy train of the Middlesex County machine, generating revenue and making money at the expense of the Long Branch residents. Sing Temptations again. The impossible task is to figure out which of the smiles is a mask. Oh, but this one's been figured out. The pool is but just a mere smile, a facade and a mask to legitimize the long-term tax abatements. Ah, again, Temptations sing. Smiling faces, smiling faces tell lies, and I got the proof. NJT Production, gentrification and quality of life. September 20th, 2018, Mayor Pallone clearly states, "There will be no new tax abatements." The lies continue. Again, Temptations sing. Smiling faces tell lies, and I got proof. March 29th, 2019, Asbury Park Press article. City Attorney Raynon to pacify on the assignment for Kushner on Broadway with that tax abatement. Quoting Raynon, "The message is in the beginning. There are no tax abatements." Meaning this administration. So clearly, we have hypocrisy.
Mr. Lepore, you have one minute.
We got a lack of credibility. You opened up a door in this city for developers to come in now. You violated your campaign promise. You lied, period. It's not a fairer Long Branch. It's a raw deal for Long Branch. These developers are gonna come in demanding tax abatements now on parity with the other tax abatements you're handing out. Particularly the one on Ocean Boulevard. You're opening up this city to a lot of litigation based on your lie. The Team Pallone campaign was no new tax abatements.
No, that's not true.
But then you, that's why we need the city psychiatrist, Ms. Selly. Okay? Because you did campaign that. So now what's happening? You gave a tax abatement? Other developers are gonna say, "Why not us? They broke the line, they broke their word. We're not standing on the sideline now." And that opens up the door for litigation. It's junk government, junk government all around. Thank you, Team Pallone, for the greatest lie I've seen in this room in better than 22 years.
Hello. My name is Kathleen English.
Just lower the mic a little bit.
My name is Kathleen English and I live at 40 Barook Drive, Long Branch. I've been there for over 10 years. The back part of my property borders on Pleasure Bay. The back end of my property is wetland more than 50% of the time. You are planning to put cement over a large area that's basically wet and floods. You're gonna take some drainage pipes and, and that's gonna abate an increase in water in, in the people that live along Barook Drive. And I'm really not buying that. I'm feeling like, no, that, that's not really it. Because what happens is, when we have a storm, the water comes off Branchport Creek, right behind Pleasure Bay. It doesn't come from Barook, it comes across. It comes right across where your pool is and right into my backyard. And during Sandy, I lost half my house. And most of the people that live on Barook Drive lost their whole house, half their house, or considerable amounts of property. And I don't know where the environmental impact study is that says it's okay for us to have more water. And if you tell me that you're gonna take a pipe and that pipe is gonna go into the creek, but the creek is overflowing because there's already too much water in the creek, I'm really bothered by this. I'm really worried. What will happen to my property? We should be thinking about ways to lessen the impact of water on, on properties that flood. you're going to raise a pool that's going to be higher than me, and we all know what flows downhill. So, where is that going? That's going right into my backyard, that's going right into my house, right into my deck, that's wiping out my basement. You know, like, how many times can we go through this? And who came around and spoke to us about this? And who offered to, and where did the city offer to say, you know, let's see how the water flows here, let's see, you know, let's look at this for a few months and see, you know, how does this impact the people on Baruch Drive? All I'm hearing about is that the pool is not that far away. You know, like, it's a few feet away. So, you know, I'm really confused, I'm really not feel, you know, I think a pool is a great idea, but I don't think it's a great idea if environmentally, it's not good for anybody if we have more flooding.
Laura, could you address that?
So, the one thing I want to point out is the edge of the concrete around the kiddie pool, which is the closest point to the homes on Baruch Drive, is over 155 feet from that rear property line. The area has to be raised in order to comply with flood guidelines. This is before CAFRA. There are stormwater management regulations that have to be addressed, which is why they've been incorporated in this plan. I don't discredit what you've said about the flooding. As I've indicated, the area is currently sitting below the flood elevation, but when you look at the contours, and we've been out, and I'm happy to also review it with you, as I indicated to your neighbor, we have the elevations along their rear property lines, as well as on this site, to demonstrate that the water's not going to adversely impact your property.
I don't understand that, because when you say 150 feet, the water comes in off Branchport Creek, right beyond, it comes in all the way over to the apartments. That's where it flows, in that direction. It comes right across, it doesn't come like, up like this, it comes right across, it comes right across Pleasure Bay, and right into Baruch Drive. That's the way it flows. So, by raising things in Pleasure Bay, now you have places that the water can't go into the ground anymore, because there's concrete there. You have piping, I understand you have piping, but that's going right into where it's overflowing. So, what does that do?
So, if I could, I'm happy to look at the plan with you. The water is not going to be going directly to the river, for exactly what you've said. If it's high tide, it's only going to back up. When I talked about the 150 feet, that is the setback from the rear property line to the pool that's being constructed, not having anything to do with how the water may be coming up and currently sitting. I acknowledge what you're saying, because the area is currently sitting below the flood elevation. So, in the event of a storm event, that's what the regulations tell us, is that this area is sitting below. What we have to do is mitigate the area of the proposed improvement.
So, you're mitigating the area of the pool, but what about the homeowners and their area? What about us?
Currently, your elevation's higher than the property at Pleasure Bay.
Thank you, Ms. English.
Good evening, Mitchell Stewart, 71, Marine Terrace, Long Branch. I have a question on 1420, the abatement ordinance. Does it apply to raw property? I know it says something about improvements of property that's 20 years old, but if I bought a lot in town, does that abatement apply to that?
No. It only applies to improvements to existing structures who are more than 20 years old.
Is there any way to think about residents in town, if they buy a lot and want to build a house, to add on a separate ordinance that would apply to raw property?
I think the purpose of this, the purpose of this tax abatement program is not to, you're essentially talking about people who are in the business of real estate development.
As a normal person, I find a lot that's kind of dilapidated in town, and I want to build it and live there, for a living, not to resell, but for a living.
I understand that, but you just described a real estate developer, which is a normal person who buys a piece of land and builds a house on it. So, the answer is that the purpose of this is to, is to, is to deal only with improvements to existing structures. And I think really the answer to your question is, no, we haven't contemplated extending that to vacant land, or tear downs and rebuilds, and that's not the case.
My other question is, with respect to giving an abatement to this developer, in exchange for a swimming pool, are you saying that any new developer that comes to town, there's a quid pro quo, I'll build you something, it's some percentage of the tax abatement in exchange for a tax abatement? Is that something that's the new policy in Long Branch?
Absolutely not, but again, we saw this as an opportunity, there was, you know, we saw this as an opportunity to get a community pool that was, you know, a multimillion-dollar project. So, in this particular case, like I said, you know, we figured that would be a good deal. I mean, what we did, you know, as a campaign, is we basically said, I mean, there's obviously been some comments, people can say, you know, whatever they want, but the reality is, what we said is that we're going to negotiate better deals for the city of Long Branch, for the residents of the city of Long Branch. And that's, in this case, like I said, we have a community pool complex.
Do you have the numbers of how much the abatement will cost the city versus what the cost is for the pool?
Well, this is, I'm sorry, your first name is?
Mitchell.
Mitchell. This is how we look at it, Mitchell. In other words, right now, remember, an abatement impacts just the structure, right? So, whatever the property tax they pay right now on that property, they pay today, and will be paying when this abatement comes into play. So, we're talking about the structure itself. So, right now, there is no structure, right? So, they're just paying on the property. So, you know, I don't know if you can make that comparison, but let's look at it this way. Let's look at it, you know, you're going to have 169 units, all of which, even with the abatement, are paying taxes that they would not otherwise be paying if it just remained a vacant land. But, in addition to that, now you have a community pool that serves all of the community. You address some of the drainage issues beyond that project, in that area, and hopefully we're, you know, not hopefully, we're going to be providing some jobs for people in the community, and, you know, local students, et cetera.
So, if one of the other developers that are building in town says, you know what, I'll build you guys a miniature golf place for the town, for the kids to use, they could come to you and say, hey, I'll do that, I want an abatement. Is there now a negotiation every time someone comes and offers you something?
You know, let me just say this, that, like I said, we talked about, you know, and if anyone else wants to jump in on this, the answer is, you know, we're open to any negotiation that benefits the city. We're not giving anything away for free, if it works for the city, if it works for the residents of the city. Again, you'll notice this is off the oceanfront, which is very important to us, but I mean, we're just looking to whatever we can do to benefit, you know, all the residents in the city. That's what we talked about, and that's what it is. I think it would be unfair for me to say, sit here for any of us, to say, okay, well, you know, you're talking about a miniature golf course, or whatever it would be, but, you know, I'm hoping that answers the question. In this particular case, you know, like I mentioned in the speech there, we were not, we were not looking to give anybody an abatement, but this was something, an opportunity that presented itself. You have a pool that, you know, a lot of residents in the community have been talking about for years and years, and so, you know, we looked at it, and we decided to go with it in this case.
I have one question on the pool. You said this pool is for residents only, but there'd be a daily pass. Who's going to check to see the people that walk in there are from the town? And how do you do that, if it's a kid who doesn't have ID? Thank you.
But, Mitchell, let me answer your question. I'm sorry, what was it?
I said, you before said that the pool will be for residents only, but there'll be a daily pass. So, if someone came from out of town and wanted to use the pool, just paid the $5, they could use it, because how do you tell who's a resident and who's a not, especially kids that don't have ID?
Well, first off, you know, a lot of this needs to be worked out, but I will tell you this, using the model in Ocean Township where I'm a member, in other words, my understanding is, we certainly would do the same thing. Our Director of Public Works and Recreation, who run the beach, automatically said that we probably would not allow kids under 12 without an adult to be there. So, we would look, obviously ask for some sort of, you know, some sort of identification to prove that they're residents.
Well, 15-year-old wouldn't have one.
But typically, in Ocean Township, it's, just by way of explanation, there, if you're a non-resident, you cannot go, you cannot use the pool. As a non-resident such as myself, you can purchase a season pass, and then, you know, season pass holder could have a guest who could come in. So, I mean, the idea is, you know, I think it's a fairly simple way to monitor those.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
My name is Gail Burns, I live at 36 Baruch Drive. I'm just amazed that we didn't hear about this until last week, and it was on social media. I didn't know there was any proposal for a pool there. We bought our house on Baruch Drive two days before the storm of '92. The entire street flooded, the cul-de-sac was a lake. We lent our boat to the fire department, because one of the houses on Middle Lane burnt down to the ground. I took care of the elderly lady that jumped and was in ICU when I was working in the hospital. It's also a piece of Long Branch that protects wildlife. We have a bald eagle that comes into our yards. I have an osprey nest at the end of the dock. We have a fox that, you know, lives under our shed and stuff. We've never been bothered by the ball field. Our kids played in the ball field, you know, it was a great time. I love the sound of the baseball bats and the balls and stuff, and the people, you know, shouting or whatever. But a pool seems to be much more of an environmental impact, I think. I don't think people realize what's going on back there. I mean, if you've grown up in Long Branch, you know, you went crabbing there, you go fishing there, you put the little rowboat out. I mean, my kids learned how to boat there. They went through the marine science program back in the day. I don't think that that is the correct spot for a pool. I would love to see a pool. I have grandchild, another one on the way. I want them to go to the pool, I brought them to the beach, but I don't think that that's the right area. It still floods. I mean, we flooded during Sandy, and yes, like Mrs. English, we lost the whole bottom part of our house. Anyway, it took us a long time to rebuild it, and we're still paying that debt off. I don't know that that's in the best interest of the city to have it in an area that I know is going to flood, because it's flooded twice since I've lived there. That's my... Thank you.
Good afternoon, Patty Veraki, 246 Jerome Oakhurst. So, by the turnout of the people that came tonight, and the amount of comments, people coming up to speak, I think it's good that we get to see that you're listening, all right? Some of the projects tonight, the abatement, the fairer Long Branch, the questions about the widens of the street, giving up pieces of land and pieces of streets. And rather than take more time and give my opinion, I would like to say that the master plan is stuff that discusses all of these things, and that is, I think, quite late now in its designing, or, you know, putting it together. We talked about this a few months ago, and since there is interest, people do want to know, a pool, we obviously would like a year-round facility, a community place, a recreational facility, jobs for the youth, a place to go for the homeless, the cold, environmental things, and the master plan, I think, should maybe have come first. Its importance. And that's it?
I need to move...
I'm organized. I don't speak extemporaneously, I'm organized.
Hi, Mr. Long, I'm sorry, Ernest McNolay, Asbury Park, New Jersey, born in Long Branch. You know, I'm listening to everyone speak here, and I think I know a little bit about what goes on in Long Branch. You know, I was raised in the house that you're going to put the apartments on. That was Mr. Lombardi's house, friend of my father. I spent a lot of time in that old house. We're talking near CVS, right? So, what's happening is, you got someone who sweetened the deal on a small amount of apartments, right, and said, look, I'll build a pool for you, all right, two miles from the beach. So, you know what, like, certain parts of Long Branch won't come here. See, so, if you let us double it, like, build 170, huh, we'll give you this pool, right? And then, you say, oh, it's going to help the community. You're going to build it in a marsh, right? How about mosquitoes? You're going to have kids? Really? Is that where you want to put it, near a dump? What is that, a recycle center? That's a disgrace for what you're planning for 6,000 kids. You know where you should build that pool? Where I learned to swim, Seashore Day Camp, and Chelsea Pool. We walked in the tunnel, we learned to swim, not just in a pool, in the beach. How are these kids going to learn to swim in the beach, in the ocean? Two miles? Two miles from the ocean? Is that saying, you know what, people on the west side of Long Branch, stay there. We don't want kids from certain areas coming here. Come on, really? And you know what, I know that, it's a reach, right? Right, Mr. Raynon? But I know a little bit about the negotiation that went into this. And who's the developer, Mr. Raynon?
Ocean Gate. Kevin, what is that, Kevin McFadden?
Ocean Gate, okay. Is that another LLC?
It is.
Another LLC?
And attached to this agreement, attached to this agreement is a flow chart of the ownership, so you can see all of it.
Okay, you know I'm not going to do that, because you approve everything anyway, so why would I waste my time? But the point is, you know, what you're really doing is, you're telling people in a certain part of the town, go in this marsh, right, that a developer who's going to make 50 times that amount, right? You know, he's going to make a lot of money off this abatement, and he's going to throw in a little $2 million pool. You know, it's horrible. And look at the demographics. I'm going to say, I'm going to go out on a limb here, I hope I don't get people coming after me on the internet again, but I'm going to say this is a demographical plan to divide the city further. You know what I mean? Like, keep certain neighborhoods, certain places, sort of away from Ocean Boulevard. So, let me ask you a question, Mr. Raynon. When you took the armory, it was supposed to be for the people, right? What is it now? Now you're going to let them build over there, put the pool out in the boondocks next to a dump, right, for kids? Why don't you put the pool next to the development? So that the kids can come there, and then walk to the ocean? Wouldn't that be nice for our kids, like it was when we all grew up here? What are you going to put them? How far is that dump from Ocean? Two miles, is it? Two miles? How would you do that to a whole section of Long Branch? Say, you stay here, everybody else is going to swim on top of, what's that hotel called? They have a pool up there? While everybody's floating in pools, you're going to ask the kids to be next to a mosquito dump? That's horrible. And everybody knows the deal you made. Everybody knows, right? Remember, it wasn't so many apartments, and then, well, we'll give you a pool, and we'll present it as a public pool. Now, all of a sudden, you're saying the kids have to pay. What kind of public pool is that? And people, I'm sorry, no.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's just a rhetorical, I said, like, what kind...
No, but just a question, and by the way, we didn't increase the number, this approval was granted by the planning board already, and we didn't increase the number of units, so, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Okay. Thanks for taking some of my time.
We doubled the number of units.
How much time do I have left? Madam Clerk, how much time do I have left?
30 seconds.
How many?
30 seconds.
Okay, good. I'd like to talk about the lawsuits filed against Chief Roebuck. I'd like to talk about Judge O'Brien's decision on Jordan versus Harvey, and how there are incredible lawsuits flying around, like the Jack's Bar incident. How many more lawsuits can this city take? And you know what, I'd like you to know, Mr. Pallone, how many of the people sitting with you were down in Wildwood, firemen and police and Roebuck, right? With all your political opposition, right?
Thank you, Mr. McNolay.
Thank you.
Mr. McNolay.
I didn't curse, I didn't...
I didn't say you did.
Oh, I thought you were going to accuse me of cursing.
I'm not going to accuse you of cursing. Go ahead. If you don't mind, stay right there for a couple seconds.
Okay.
Long Branch is not a segregated city. The pool is not put there to segregate one part of Long Branch... The pool is not put there to segregate one part of Long Branch to another part of Long Branch. That is not who Long Branch is. It never has been who Long Branch is.
You know what? I disagree.
Hold on, my brother.
It's my opinion.
Hold on, sir.
Okay.
That is your opinion, so I'm responding.
Okay.
On the other hand, I'll just let you go, but you're not going to tell me and this council that we did this to segregate the city.
What do you mean, "I'm not going to"? I just did tell you.
And I'm pretty sure, sir, I'm pretty sure... You just listen, or you...
Well, go ahead.
I'm still responding.
Okay.
I am pretty sure the people who have come up and spoke about the wetlands in their backyard... I grew up on Florence Avenue, which is not too far from there. So, don't tell me that it's a segregated city. Don't tell me that it's a poor, blighted area. Don't tell me that these kids can't play with these kids because Long Branch has never been there. Now, I don't know about where you're from, in Asbury Park, if it's that segregated or not, but here in Long Branch...
Are you kidding me? Were you talking to me?
Do you know what the school...
I'm more Long Branch than you are, sir. How about that? And you know something?
I'm not raised here.
You know what? You're full of baloney. How's that? I don't care if you're the President of America. You're full of baloney. You're going to say I'm a racist? You should make sure... You know what? You just said that. Yes, you did. You said, "I said it's a segregated city." You know what? You know what? You know what? This is all recorded. You ought to think about what you say. Stop threatening people. Yes, it has been.
I didn't threaten you. I don't...
Oh, no? It hasn't been segregated here? Look at the way it is now. Who goes to Pure Village? Everybody? Come on down, go think about it. You used to be in ACP. How about helping everybody out?
Anybody that wants to.
What? Anybody?
Anybody that wants to can go to...
Oh, really? Who could afford to go there?
Anybody that wants to go there.
Well, you know what? That's a form of demographic...
That is a choice.
Exclusion. Hello?
It's a choice. Have a good day, sir. That's a choice. If you don't want to go, don't go.
Hello. Steve, you're at twenty-eight Baruch Drive. I do kind of want to echo some of the thoughts about the flooding in the area. You know, we're raising the elevation, adding fill. I don't know where the cut's coming from. It does come up through that way. Everything backs up. We know that. It doesn't drain out. And that does go out to the roads as well. Up there, by the way, the boat ramp is. That street's constantly flooded. I often go into work, have to turn around, go out the back way. So, I would like to take a look at your plans and see that. Is the CAFRA permitting process, you know, open for public comments? I can't recall.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sure that's posted somewhere. The CAFRA permit number has been submitted.
So, we don't have the application number yet, but it has been submitted, yes.
Okay. I guess on that note, you know, I do keep hearing questions about how much more would it cost to do the pool versus, you know, indoor versus outdoor. I kind of am curious because I just keep hearing four times the amount. You know, are we getting to purchasing and installing this pool the right way through the tax abatements? I know you were kind of asked. I didn't really hear an answer. The value of those tax abatements versus the value, construction cost of this pool.
I'm sorry. Could you just repeat?
Yeah, the value of the tax abatement versus the value of the construction cost of the pool. What's the difference?
I don't know. Can you actually...
I don't think I have that answer. I can tell you that the... Look, tax abatements have a couple of purposes. One of the purposes of this tax abatement is to get this project done, to get that site cleaned up, to get the drainage done. So, the answer is, the advantage to the city is, is that right now they're paying land-only taxes. So, it's a difference not between what they would pay if they built it or if they had a tax abatement. It's what it's making, what it is paying taxes now and what it will be when it's built. So, that's the answer to the question, is that's really the comparison.
Okay. Have we looked into, you know, we're talking about doing the drainage around the Ocean Gate community. Have we looked into improving the drainage that is a problem currently around the Pleasure Bay apartments, the boat ramp area over there? And, you know, is that something that could get cleaned up in this process as well?
It's certainly something we can look into. It would probably be part of a larger capital project through the municipality.
Okay. And then just the other thing with, and, you know, I'm not exactly sure how the flood maps and everything work when they do their surveys and whatnot, but will the raising of the elevation in this area impact the flood maps in the surrounding community? I know personally, my property is kind of right on the edge between zones. And, you know, if that affects how that survey works, that could be a potential impact for the owners in that court.
No, it wouldn't negatively impact the flood maps, the development of this parcel. We're just obligated to comply, so no different than if a lot of the homes were reconstructed. They'd have to be to the same elevation that we have to do this, which is flood elevation plus two.
Okay. Okay, I guess the only other thought I had really was, so, obviously, they've decided to build this for us. This state of value of this pool, you know, is there a way that we can competitively bid this? Maybe get a better deal for the community, get a little bit more out of the project?
So, the one thing I can tell you is when a municipality bids, and I'm sure Mr. Renon can do it, it has to be all through prevailing wage process if a municipality does it as opposed to a private developer. So, I think the municipal cost of this is in the neighborhood of two-point-five million dollars if it was publicly bid.
Okay.
Could you raise the microphone just a little? I'm sorry.
Apologize. I think that's all I have for now. I just want to make, and I guess the last thing, just to, I do have concern with the parking. See overflow. I'd like to be able to have people over my house in the summer and have them have somewhere to park. So, you know, I understand that that will probably be a work in progress, see how things work out. But I hope there's an open...
I mean, you know, this is going to take time. I don't know how, you know, what attendance we'd have next year and so forth. But, you know, we understand that if there are issues that arise with parking or whatever, you know, we're going to have to address these things. And I mean, we want to, you know, we're here to listen to everybody and understand what's going on. And if we see some issues or some issues are brought to our attention, we'll try to address them, of course.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? I'd like, need a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Hello, my name is Mario Nelson. I'm from Long Branch, born and raised. I played football for Long Branch. Won championships for Long Branch. Coach George, love Coach George. But I grew up, I'm thirty-four years old. I grew up in Long Branch. And we used to have the arcades over there and all the rides. And that was like the thing for us to do when I was that age, you know? I mean, to make, I would think, like, to make a YMCA would be better for Long Branch. You know what I mean? So, it would be more integrated with all the diversities around, other than making a community pool, which, that baseball field that is there, we've been playing on that field for over fifteen years. Oh, thirty years? That field has, like, got a lot of blood, sweat, and tears on it from us and from all the older guys in Long Branch that really are from Long Branch. Like, I'm from Long Branch. I'm born and bred Long Branch. But I think a YMCA would be much better than a community pool. Even if you build it a YMCA there, I think it would be better than just a community pool. I mean, from my aspect.
I can say, what's your name again, sir?
Mario Nelson.
Nelson?
Nelson.
Mr. Nelson, I could say, a few years ago, the YMCA did come into Long Branch to do a study, to see if it was feasible, and it fell through. We, the city itself, had nothing to do with saying yes or no. They came to see if it was feasible. What we, I do know for a fact, they talked to different people in the community of Long Branch. And also, they wanted Long Branch to build the YMCA, meaning, you know, the taxpayer and so on and so forth. And they would run the YMCA. But, so, just to let you know that they did do a study of their own.
Okay.
But why, you know, it fell through, I can't answer that.
Okay. I just thought that was a good suggestion for us.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you. Again, can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We can take the listed resolutions as a consent order?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Applications, we have none. Miscellaneous business for the good of the order. Councilman Viera.
Yes, good evening, and thanks for coming. I'll tell you what, it's great to see you at full house, and keep coming because we feed out of your information that you feed us. Your opinions mean a lot to us. The people that were concerned about their flooding of their homes, we hear you. We have professionals we hire for that. We took that all into consideration. And we have a very good engineering firm working on that. And we wouldn't put you dead if it would be flooding your backyards. You know that? And it's an area that we found, between all of us in the city, that was the most acceptable area for us because of the parking. If we're going to have some parking issues, we're going to work with them. We're going to solve them. We're not going to crowd the neighborhoods. We're going to do everything we can not to crowd your neighborhood, believe me. And I also like to congratulate Laura for Employee of the Month, and good night.
Councilman Vogt.
So, I'm going to repeat some of what Councilman Viera said in terms of thanking everybody for your comments. Many of them very thoughtful, giving us some things to consider. And in that whole process, I also want to thank our engineer and planner, Laura, for being here tonight and for giving such, again, thoughtful answers to everything. You're a real asset to the city, and we appreciate all your work. That's one comment. My second comment, and I'm sorry that Anita left, so I'm going to direct this to Councilwoman Selly because she is on the Disabilities Committee. And I attended a meeting last night where Gopal and Freeholder Arnon held. And it was because they want to increase the number of accessible beaches up and down the Jersey Shore. And they particularly wanted Long Branch there because they're holding up Long Branch as the model to try to replicate at other beaches. So, it was a very proud moment for Long Branch. Do a lot to the work of the Disabilities Committee and so many other people that contributed to creating our first accessible beach. So, it was a nice moment of Long Branch pride that I wanted to share with you. So, thank you for coming, and good night.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Wittes?
I'd just like to also thank everyone for coming this evening. We do listen to your concerns, and we certainly will address those. And, you know, it's a very exciting evening for all of us because we've, you know, heard for so many years how everyone wanted a community pool. And now it's going to be something that's going to happen. And as Mr. Kovan stated, it's going to make a big impact on our kids. And I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Mr. Kovan, Ms. Peters, Mr. Grant, for your support here this evening. And again, thank you for everyone for coming, and have a good evening.
Councilwoman Selly.
I've listened to everything everybody said, and I'm only one person. But I want you to know that we all sat up here for an hour and a half and listed to the comments, some good, some bad. Everybody had an opportunity to say what they wanted to say about the pool. I think it's a great idea. That's personally my opinion, okay? I think it's something the city needs. If I remember correctly, along with Councilman Dangler, about the YMCA and what they were going to do and how we put it on the ballot, and it was turned down by the people because they had to pay for it. The most important part of this is the developer is giving something back to the city, and it's not going to cost the city anything to build it. However, yes, there will be some costs because we have the upkeep. That's all I'm going to say on the pool, and I hope all of you have enjoyed. And Laura, I want to thank you personally. Did a nice job answering all the questions. And also, don't forget Friday, everybody. That's Valentine's Day. Don't forget your sweethearts. Thank you.
Mayor Pallone.
So, I think a lot is, I'd be repeating what was already said, but I won't. But I would like to say, I really appreciate all your being here tonight for your comments. I'd like to also thank Laura Newman. And I'd like to just express that with every one of us here, our very first conversation when we were looking at that location was, "What about the flooding?" And she assured us that it should not be an issue, or obviously, we would not have done that. Now, again, you know, I can't predict, I can't predict the future. But Laura is a wonderful engineer, and I certainly trust what she said. And so, again, thank you, and thank you all. I also want to thank Mr. Kovan, Mr. Grant, and Ms. Peters for being here. Your support of this and just, your support of just being here is appreciated. And on another note, for many of you who are here for the first time, again, thank you for being here. And I just, on your way out, last week, this all just happened. But right outside the council chamber, if you could take a look to your left on that middle door, we have a dark wooden cabinet owned by President Ulysses S. Grant. It was part of his cottage when he summered here in Long Branch from the start of his presidency in eighteen sixty-eight to the end of his life in eighteen eighty-five. The cottage that he lived in was destroyed in nineteen sixty-two. And there are literally just a couple of pieces of furniture that remain from that original cottage. Also, you'll notice that there's a copper portrait based off President Grant's presidential painting, which is in the White House. And in a letter of introduction penned by the artist to General Grant, many of you know we have a fascinating history. And, you know, if you could just take a minute before you leave to take a look at that. And also, you'll see all along the walls, another famous American artist, Winslow Homer, spent a lot of time here in Long Branch. And many of his illustrations and paintings were done here, and they're on display outside as well. So, I just wanted to thank you again for coming and have a great week.
I would like to say a couple of quick things. Probably most important, I lived in Seville Manor first as a young man, then moved to Florence Avenue. So, to my neighbors from Atlantic Avenue area, flooding is an issue. So, I know every time it would rain, even on Florence Avenue, the water would back up in the basement. Fortunately, we did have a basement, but it always, there was always a problem. No matter when, it just was always a problem. So, in all good conscience, we certainly wouldn't okay this project if we didn't have reasonable assurance that it would not do more damage or cause more problem to those who live closer to where the pool would be built. And also, I want to say that pretty soon, you're going to start hearing more and more and more about the 2020 census. So, please, everyone, please handle your own responsibility in regards to filling out the 2020 papers. You can do it online, and there's also jobs available. If you go online to 2020 census, there are jobs available also for those who are looking for a job. And thirdly, as Dr. Selly said, Happy Valentine's Day. Have a good, safe holiday. And if you don't like the meal on Friday, go out on Saturday. Probably cheaper and the same food. God bless you all.
Council President, if I may, I just wanted to say again, if anyone wants to stay a little later, and we'll be glad to answer any additional questions that you have.
Can I have a motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
adjourned.
You'll never believe this, but I'm a nurse in nursing, and one of my, I have a really nutty patient, and she tripped me, and I had a shoulder sprain. I just went back to work, and I can't use my...
You're so scared.
That's getting tricky, actually.
No, but you'll believe me, I just went down like a load of...
Did you remember? What was this?
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, the tax... I'm sure you checked...
Hi.
...the Jersey Red. I went in your channel, I'm trying to slide. As business...
They own the first building?
But, we have a student arts center.
Is it more than 20 years old?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's a school.
So, if you put $100,000 extension on your building, you wouldn't pay taxes on that extra $100,000.
So, you're...
So, you got a five-year payment?
So, that $100,000 extension, are you doing anything interior?